All right, I ask everybody to please take your seats. We're going to start in a few moments. All right, at this time, I called the order, November 28th, 2022, Special Town Meeting of the Town of Stoughton. The meeting is now in session. This meeting is taking place at the Stoughton High School Auditorium, 232 Pearl Street in Stoughton. Again, Town Meeting Representatives, please make sure you have checked in with your precinct chair for attendance purposes and to receive your assigned clicker. This meeting is also being broadcast live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation. It is also being recorded for future rebroadcasting. Please rise and stand if you are able and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic, to the Constitution, to one nation, one God, one unity, one freedom, and one truth, that is, God. Please remain standing. We recently lost a few Stoughton residents, Joseph DeAndre, also Mrs. Hamel, and others. I apologize, we're not having the acrology up on the screen, but we'll make sure we definitely have that at the end of the town meeting. So the town has lost several beloved members of our community who served our town in numerous ways. Stoughton is a better place because of their service. Please join me for a moment of silence for those we have lost. May they all rest in peace. Please be seated. Before we take attendance, I'd like to introduce our guests this evening. We have Congressman Stephen Lynch. He was over here a little earlier. Oh, there he is, I'm sorry. Congressman. And we have our state senator in the audience, Senator Walter Timbly. I'd like to introduce our town elected officials. We have at the table here, the chairperson of our select board, Deborah Roberts. Vice Chair Stephen Cavey. Scott Carrara, member of the select board. Joseph McCrisky, member of the select board. Lou Gito, member of the select board. We have our interim town manager, Mark Tisdale. And then we have Sandra Grope, chairperson of the Stoughton School Committee. We have Katie Pinanokian, vice chair of Stoughton School Committee. I believe we have Lindsey Kreckler, if she's here? No? Okay, my apologies, Catherine Weiss. We have Dr. Thomas Robb, superintendent of our Stoughton Public Schools. Back at this table, we have Brian Winter, town council. He's from the firm of Mead, Talaman, and Costa. We have Stephanie Carrara, our town clerk. We have Samantha Regal from the town clerk's office. And also, the town auditorium secretary. She does a lot of work throughout the year. Kelly Johnson from the town clerk's office. Bill Rowe, town accountant. Juan Anokian, chairperson of the Finance Committee. John Enzavino, vice chair of the Finance Committee. And also, I'd like to thank our precinct chairs, I'm just going to read their names quickly. Juan Fox from precinct one. George Delinsky, precinct two. Matt Callis, precinct three. Julie Gito, precinct four. Kamel Drews, precinct five. Christine Yakabuchi, precinct six. Diane Dolan, precinct seven. And David Sheehan, precinct eight. The precinct chair has put a lot of time in throughout the year to get this town meeting to where it is tonight. So we thank, and we also thank everybody on my right side, my left side, and everybody in the audience here, the town meeting reps. We appreciate your efforts. All right, at this time, I invite our congressman, Stephen Lynch, to come up to the podium here. With some kind of words, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I know there are important matters here before town meetings, so I will make my comments brief. I also want to thank my colleague in government, Walter Timbly, for being here, and I know that Bill Galvin, Representative Bill Galvin, and Representative Ted Phillips are supposed to be here later on. I must apologize, after my remarks, I'm trying to make a wake in South Boston, which is until 8:00, so I'll have to hustle. But I was pleased to see, I'll just give a brief report on what's going on in Washington, especially as it relates to the town of Stoughton. I was pleased to see that the town of Stoughton in total received an amount of $2.5 million from the COVID relief package. And as COVID is starting to percolate again around our communities, I do know that there's a very high vaccination rate, and hopefully, we won't have to go back into that situation again where funding is needed. Stoughton also received another $2.85 million from the American Rescue Plan, which was critical funding to help Stoughton through that time period when tax revenues were not coming in as expected and to really mitigate the adverse economic impacts of the pandemic on the town of Stoughton. As I'm sure you're all aware, the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed in Congress earlier this year, we're now seeing funding being delivered across the state. So that bill alone will provide about $9.5 billion to the state of Massachusetts over five years. And rather than earmarking the bill for certain purposes, we actually left the discretion to Senator Timbly and your other representatives in the House, Mr. Phillips and Bill Galvin, to help with the targeting of that money to areas where it'll be most needed and do the most benefit. This year alone, our state again received, in the current year, $2 billion in funding, and we're already putting that historic funding to maximum use, some of which will be used right here in Stoughton to improve the roadways around, I believe it's the Wilkins Elementary School. That project includes reconstructing the sidewalks, curbing, the installation of new school zone flashes to protect families and children attending that school and to improve pedestrian safety in general. We're seeing many more projects like this one being funded across the Commonwealth and the country. I do know that we had several requests from the town of Stoughton. One was for the improvements at Canton Street, Route 27, School Street, and Summer Street. Those, as I said, were requested by the town of Stoughton. The projects are located at the intersection of Canton Street, at School Street, and Summer Street, and the intersection has been continually identified by the Mass Department of Transportation as a highway safety improvement program crash cluster based on crash incidents and severity. So that project would include various operational and safety improvements at the intersection, including pavement milling and overlay, a new surfacing addition, enhanced pedestrian and bicycle accommodation, I assume that's bicycle lanes. The project would also enhance vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle safety at this high crash intersection, and the amount requested on that was $1.8 million. Stoughton intersection improvements and related work at Central Street, Canton Street, and Tosca Drive were also requested by the town of Stoughton, and that project is located at the intersection of Central Street at Canton Street and Tosca Drive. The town would like to address continuing safety concerns regarding the Central Street, Canton Street, Tosca Drive intersection. That project as well would include a modified intersection with additional turn lanes and alteration to traffic control, the widening of Central Street to provide additional turn lanes, and the modification of Canton Street to provide a channelized right turn and the installation of a traffic signal. The project will also include sidewalks and granite curbing, as well as bicycle accommodations, accessibility improvements, and additional streetscape and utility improvements. So the amount on that was just a little over $3 million. So those are currently in debate in Congress, as you know, Congress changed hands in the election. So in January, when we reconvene, there'll be a Republican speaker, we're not sure if it'll be Representative McCarthy or not, but anyway, we're in the lame duck session right now when trying to get some of this funding through before we change hands and go to the next, to the next Congress. We also passed an appropriations bill just before the holiday that will continue our federal investments in housing, public education, and childcare. That bill also included additional funding for LIHEAP, the Low Income Heating Energy Assistance Program. And because of the increased costs of heating, both natural gas and heating oil that we're experiencing, Massachusetts will receive approximately $37 million in this current round, but as the winter goes on, we'll revisit that to see if more funding is necessary. I want to thank you all for being involved in town meeting. You know, Stoughton is a shining example of what's best about America. I see the way you treat your veterans, the way you take care of your seniors, the way you are very attentive to your children's needs, and you're supporting the schools. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to represent you in Congress. May God bless the town of Stoughton. Again, thank you for being involved in town meeting, and may God continue to bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Congressman Lynch. Now we'd like to hear from Senator Walter Timbly.
How's this? Okay. So I guess Congressman Lynch will get a twofer out of this. I must say, Congressman Lynch is a wonderful partner to each and every one of us, both in the local level, I'm sure we'll all attest it at the state level, so do the congressmen. Thank you. Thank you for tipping me off that my microphone wasn't working, I greatly appreciate that help. And on a very serious note, I just want to first of all thank each and every member of this body for your service, and each and every citizen of this town for the privilege of working for you folks. It's been my privilege to work for this town since January of 2017, and I will never forget that I worked for the people of this town, not the other way around. I worked for you folks, that will never be forgotten. Ted Phillips, Bill Galvin, and I and Steve Lynch, we're very proud to be part of the Stoughton delegation and work for each and every one of you today and each and every day of the calendar. So thank you for that, and just a quick update, if I may. As your state senator, I am the chair of the Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee in the state senate. I'm also the vice chair of the Labor and Workforce Development Committee. I also serve as a rank and file member on the Joint Committees on Revenue, Travel and Tourism, Bonding and Capital Expenditures, and State Administration and Regulatory Oversight. Some quick budget updates and legislative vehicle updates in terms of delivering resources to this town, which I believe, as Congressman Lynch just mentioned a moment ago, and I'm paraphrasing, this is a wonderful community, and it deserves the very best. And through the efforts of Congressman Lynch, myself, Ted Phillips, and Bill Galvin, we are determined that this town receives the very best in terms of resources. It's a privilege to work with the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, and our School Committee and each and every board here in this town, and of course, our town clerk and our moderator. Thank you. This year in Chapter 70, the FY 2023 budget, the town of Stoughton will receive $21,494,614. Unrestricted government assistance, $3,709,525. And Chapter 90, $773,259. Through amendments that I inserted in the senate budget, which carried the day in the overall General Appropriations Act, which is a concurrence between the House and the Senate, I inserted an amendment which carried the day for $20,000 for Stoughton Fire Department in Service Training. I thank Chief Carroll and Assistant Chief Mang Comber for cooperating with me on that figure. $20,000 for Oasis, for Continued Substance Use Disorder Prevention Training Funding. We have a tradition in the Massachusetts State Senate, we make an inaugural speech on an issue that's very important to us. My inaugural speech along those lines was seeking resources to combat substance use disorder. There are nine substance use disorder coalitions in the towns that I'm privileged to represent, and one of them does great work here in Stoughton with Oasis. So each and every year, I file an amendment seeking $20,000 for each and every one of those coalitions, for the very simple reason that the folks working in those coalitions supporting families and supporting those who are suffering from substance use disorder know best as to what will work and help support our families and those who are struggling with substance use disorder. So I was successful in bringing those monies back to the town of Stoughton. Also, a general government bond bill, I secured $425,000 for design and construction of AR New Fire Headquarters here in the town of Stoughton. Also, $75,000 I secured through an amendment for the design and construction of pickleball courts. So I thank you very much for our Parks and Recs Department for collaborating on that. Also, in a transportation bond bill, I secured $2.275 million for the design and construction of MBTA quiet zones within the three different MBTA crossings within downtown Stoughton. And quite simply, that would allow the MBTA and mandate that they install gates, which would create a situation where we could eliminate the horn, which I'm sure we've all heard that horn before, and it would be great, I believe, for economic development in downtown Stoughton. Also, in the transportation bond bill, I secured $2.2 million for the signalization at the Canton and School Street intersections. Also, through this same transportation bond bill, I secured $30,000 for the installation of e-bike parking and universal charging stations here in Stoughton. With this same transportation bond bill, through an amendment that I filed, I also secured $50,000 for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations and infrastructure here in Stoughton. In terms of economic development, with amendments that I have filed, I was able to secure an economic development vehicle, $142,857, in funding for local economic development projects. Also, in an economic development bond bill, I secured $571,428 in bond funding for local economic development bond projects. And with that, I thank your Stoughton Town Government for collaborating and consulting with myself on each and every one of these projects. As the Chair of Public Safety and Homeland Security, I am also the chair of a special commission that has been formed to explore police cadet programs throughout the Commonwealth. We've now, and I have conducted three hearings, we have two more hearings to go, and we will be producing a report per legislative order on the Mass General Laws before the first of the year. Now beyond that, I must say, in terms of, one of my big priorities since the Chair of Public Safety and Homeland Security, is cybersecurity. Cyber attacks and cyber warfare are not something of the future, they are something that is upon us. Various communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and various institutions have been held hostage by ransomware attacks by either foreign nations or rogue criminal enterprises. Back on March 26, I convened a symposium with the Mass National Guard and their two cybersecurity defense battalions, which are outstanding, and towns from each and every one of the towns that I have the privilege of representing, so does Stoughton's Town Government, to your Select Board, to your town administrator, thank you for participating. It has been my privilege, as I mentioned earlier, to work for you folks for the last five years. I will never forget that I worked for you folks. Everything that I have accomplished here, Rep. Galvin and Rep. Phillips have supported on the House side, and they will be along, I'm sure, at some point tonight or in future meetings, to talk about what they've initiated in the House, and I, of course, have concurrently supported. But again, thank you to each and every one of you. I thank each and every one of you who serve here in town meeting, and also on the many boards in this town. It's a privilege to work for you folks, and I thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving belatedly.
Thank you, Senator Walter Timbly. Appreciate you coming down here tonight, and thank you for being a friend to Stoughton. We appreciate your support. All right, this evening, we two, determine whether we have a quorum, so we can proceed with the special town meeting. We're going to ask each precinct chair for the number of precinct reps. So at this point, I'm going to ask Juan Fox, precinct one, count. 11. George Delinsky, precinct two. 18. Precinct two. Precinct three, Matthew Callis. 17. Precinct three. Precinct four, Julie Gito. 17. Thank you. Precinct five, Kamel Drews. 13. You can clap for precinct five, too. Count for everybody here, clap for everybody. Precinct six, Christine Yakabuchi. Precinct seven, Diane Dolan. Precinct eight, David Sheehan. 13. Please stand by while the, quick on the numbers here. We have 110 town meeting reps present. We only need 85 for a quorum. So I declare that we do have a quorum. 110 town meeting reps are present this evening. Thank you all for coming this evening, we appreciate that. Again, only the town meeting reps should be voting with their clickers. At this time, before we go to discuss the deputy moderator, I'm going to ask for procedural motions. They're on the virtual table, and they're also on the table up in front of the auditorium. I'm going to ask Juan Fox, precinct one, if you can go to the microphone, read the procedural motion, then I'll ask for a second, and then we will vote on that by voice vote. Yes, that microphone is on? Is it on? Little button up top, slide it towards on.
Juan Fox, precinct one. Move to dispense with the reading of the warrant and the return thereof.
Is there a second? George Delinsky, second in that? By voice vote, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Precinct two, George Delinsky. Should say, procedural motion two.
Move to act on the articles in the order printed in the special town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Second. Eric Coleman, second? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Excuse me. Motion number three, Matt Callis. This is a little lengthy, take your time.
Matt Callis, precinct three. Move that amendments or substitute motions for an article be considered only if in writing and further that any proposed substitute motions or complex amendments be delivered in writing to the moderator 24 hours in advance of the beginning of the session at which the motion is to be made, i.e. by 7:00 p.m. the day prior. Motions to be emailed to the moderator at b-mullin@stoughton-mass.gov and a copy to the town clerk at scar at stoughton-mass.gov.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Peter Murphy. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion four, Jerry McDonald.
Jerry McDonald, precinct four, vice chairman. Move that no reconsideration of any article take place until the last article has been completed at the special town meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded, Bob Cone. By voice vote, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion number five, Kamel Drews.
Kamel Drews, precinct five. Move that special town meeting does not take up any new business after 10:30 p.m.
Is there a second? Seconded? Joe Soars. By voice vote, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all. Those procedural motions just help us move efficiently to town meeting this evening. All right. And now I'm going to open the floor to elect a deputy moderator. Moderator, excuse me. Is there any nominations?
Mr. Moderator?
Juan Anokian?
Could I nominate Cynthia Walsh for deputy moderator?
Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor of Cynthia Walsh for deputy moderator, say aye. All those opposed? It's good to have a deputy moderator in case I get hit by a truck or bus or lightning. Okay, so if I win the Mega Millions, I won't see me for a while. All right, let's move on. Okay, just to refresh everybody's memory, when we get to the articles, it'll be a motion read by, in this case, the finance chair. Seconded, it will have the committee reports read, and the presenter of the article has 10 to 15 minutes to present the article, followed by technical question period, two questions for a town meeting rep, followed by pro and con debate. Town meeting reps have up to three minutes to provide their pro and con comments, and if needed, we'll have a summary by the presenter of the article, approximately three to five minutes, and then we'll proceed to voting by town meeting reps using the papers. All right, I think we're ready to begin. All right, I noticed that typo, a couple of things, no page numbers. Excuse me, Article one, Article two, three. If you want to take a moment to just write down page one, page two, page three, page four, page five, it's up to you. I'm going to be referring to the page numbers where the articles are. Okay, we're going to proceed here. On page one, Article one, I'm going to ask Juan Anokian, Chair of the Finance Committee, to read the motion.
That the town move to appropriate the sum of $5,655,000 for the purposes of financing, the planning, designing, permitting, and constructing of a new water treatment plant for the muddy pond water supply sources required for the treatment of PHER and polyfluoroalkyl substances, PFAS, in said water supply sources, and all incidental and related costs, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $5,655,000 and issue bonds or notes therefore pursuant to Chapter 44 and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws or any other enabling authority. That such bonds and notes shall be general obligations of the town unless the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board determines that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 1 of Chapter 29(c). That the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow all or portion of such amount from Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust established pursuant to Chapter 29(c) and in connection to Chapter 29(c) and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and develop Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, and that the Select Board or other appropriate local body or official is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with Department of Environmental Protection, and that the Select Board is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project.
Seconded by John Inzamino. I'm going to ask for the Finance Committee, but before I do that, I just wanted to remind everybody, please, only water here this evening. Obviously, no alcohol beverages or food in the auditorium. All right? So let me ask for the Finance Committee report, please.
Finance Committee voted 13 to 0 to recommend the town meeting as written in the warrant.
Thank you. There's a typo here into governmental regulations. It should be into governmental relations committee. That was my error. I truly made that mistake. So, every time you see that, it's into governmental relations. Okay, Agavon Schumaker, could you read the report, please?
IGR voted 5 to 0 to recommend the town meeting as written in the warrant.
Thank you. I'll read the Municipal Operations Committee. They did not have a quorum, so no vote was taken. Okay, at this time, we'll have the presenter, Mark Tisdill. Peter McNulty, could you introduce yourself to the Town Meeting reps, please?
Phil McNulty, Stoughton Water and Sewer Superintendent. So a lot of this stuff is in the backup material in the Town Meeting warrant, but just briefly, in October of 2020, Mass DEP adopted a new regulation for PFAS. PFAS stands for polyfluoroalkyl substances, and the concentration is 20 pots per trillion for drinking water. That's the new standard. For the last year and a half, the Stoughton Water Department was required to test for all our sources monthly to get a baseline of the PFAS levels of each of our sources. Thus far, only the Muddy Pond source has elevated PFAS results above 20. As a result, DEP enforcement has required public notification, a short-term plan, a long-term plan, alternatives analysis, conceptual design, financial planning, and a schedule for corrective action. The purpose of this article is to provide funding for corrective action, in this case, GAC treatment, granular activated carbon, to address the DEP's notice of noncompliance for PFAS. Town meeting approval is required for funding and SRF funding participation through the state Clean Water Trust. Highlights of the drinking water SRF include 0% interest loan, 13% environmental justice loan forgiveness, and up to 25% loan forgiveness for emerging contaminants, in this case,
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNulty. All right, at this point, we have time for technical questions. Anybody have any technical questions? Mr. Coleman, please use the microphone, state your name and precinct number, and also your question, please.
Eric Coleman, Precinct 5. What percentage of our water do we expect to get from Muddy Pond once this is complete?
Muddy Pond provides about 20% of the town's supply.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Pat, come on up. State your name and precinct number, please.
Pat Colburn, Precinct 4. Does Muddy Pond cover a specific location of town, and do we have any idea why those rates are so much worse than the other sources of water? I was looking at the charts on Page 15.
Muddy Pond discharges out into Bay Road, the water main that's there, and then, you know, blends, if you will, with all the other sources, you know, as it moves through the piping network. Why that one's slightly higher than the rest, I don't know. The standard is 20, as I said, and Muddy Pond has ranged anywhere from 18 to 23, so it's just above the standard, but it's been consistently there.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. It's just some of the others have 7, 8. So, is there anything specifically contaminating? Is there... I know you answered the question, but there's nothing that you know of that's causing the problem there?
I mean, if you look at the surrounding area, no. I mean, it's wooded. You have the soccer fields, you know, towards West Street. You have the Town of Sharon, residential development on the other side. You know, it's not like there's an old factory there or something, if that's what you're referring to.
I was hoping. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Pat Colburn. Dave Laurie, do you have a question? Name and precinct number, please.
David Laurie, Precinct 6. Thank you to you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, Deputy, if some of these numbers go up and down, they fluctuate. They don't seem to always trend up, up, up. They tend to go up and down. I noticed that actually on all the different wells that you tested, and if they're all interconnected, like you said, is it possible to take this well offline until it starts testing better and use MWRA water? And if yes, what's the cost advantages to doing that?
Yeah, it's possible to take it offline, yeah. I mean, would be, you know, the more sources you take offline, the more risk you have, you know, if something else happens, so I don't recommend that.
Why don't you recommend that?
Well, if something, if you have a pump failure at one of the other sites, you know, it's, the more operational flexibility you have, the safer you can run your system.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ventresco? Name and precinct number, please.
To you, Moderator, to Mr. McNulty.
Name and precinct number, please.
Oh, Peter Ventresco, Precinct 8. Was there any observation wells driven in a radius around these, this particular well to see which way the flow of this chemical is coming from?
Yes, but not as part of this. The requirements of DEP are to sample the, what they call a sample tap, just before the water, the treated water leaves the station. I say yes because there is a Zone 2 and a Zone 3. A Zone 1 is the 400-foot radius around the source, and Zone 2 is a studied engineered map that shows a contribution of rainfall hits the ground and gets to the well.
Yeah, but so, all these observation wells, we still don't know which way it's coming from? Like, if it's coming down from Bay Road, or coming from Plain Street side down, or where's it coming from?
I don't know.
We don't know. Well, that's why I'm asking, you got the observation wells, to get a determination where it's coming from.
The state has just, DEP is taking that on, not the town. They've started. They've sampled some locations in the, around Stoughton to start to answer that question.
All right, the previous speaker brought up the MWRA, which I was going to talk about, but that's been offline now for quite a few years, right?
It's not offline. We pump about 5% of our water.
You're still taking water from there?
Yeah.
Oh, I was under the impression that it was shut down. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ventresco. Juan Fox, name and precinct number, please.
Juan Fox, Precinct 1. Being that construction is not going to start until the beginning of '24, why are we dealing with this in this town meeting as opposed to regular town meeting in May?
This is the quickest we could get. Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Was that, have you heard?
Pardon me?
Do you want to restate your question for people in here?
Question is, since the construction is not slated to begin until the beginning of '24, why are we addressing it in this town meeting as opposed to regular town meeting in May of '23?
Well, if we started six months from now, is essentially your question, that we just push the end product six months out further, you know?
It's further into '24?
Yeah, or even '25.
Okay, thank you. Joseph Sores, name and precinct number, please.
Joseph Sores, Precinct 2. What does PFAS cause? What is, why am I in danger of PFAS?
It's a myriad of things. Let's... Remember that, Mark? And it's still being studied, so none of it's absolute. Yeah, yeah. The health effects can include development effects in infants, effects on the liver, blood, immune system, thyroid, and may elevate the risk of certain cancers. Again, those continue to be studied by the EPA.
And when do we think we're going to have this in control?
This, you know, if this gets, you know, voted on and approved tonight, the ball starts rolling. From there, we request funding from the drinking water SRF program and stop the design immediately in January.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Peter Murphy. Name and precinct number.
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2. For those that have concerns, would it help if they added a carbon filter to their house tomorrow in the meantime while this is being developed?
What was the second part of that question?
In other words, while we're waiting for this plant to come online, it's going to be a few years, would it help to put a carbon filter on your house water, your drinking water at your house in the meantime? You know, a small 10-inch carbon filter?
Yes.
That would help if you had very much concerns.
That's a newly developed thing that's come online like the last year or two, and they range in cost from, you know, $70 to $250, that sort of. It's under the same type of fitting.
So you could do that in the meantime while we're waiting for?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Cohn? Name and precinct number, please.
Cohn, Precinct 5. Mr. McNulty, you mentioned numbers, that the NRR, you said 0% interest on loans, then you mentioned more numbers that they give us back. Can you refer to that in dollars and cents that we will get back?
Yeah, so the 0% part, that's, you know, up to Mr. Rowe to decide what's best in the financial planning, but that could be up to 30 years maximum. I know we like to use 20 years typically. The 13% loan forgiveness for environmental justice is guaranteed through the program.
How much?
13.
How much money?
13 times, you know, .13 times 5 million, whatever that is.
That's a lot of money.
We all set? We just want to keep moving.
500,000 or so.
There's another part. He mentioned 25% of something.
Yes, up, so that's not a hard number. That's up to 25% loan forgiveness. So that depends on what other the towns are doing. A lot of the towns are doing the exact same thing I'm doing right now. Sharon, Easton, Brockton, I'm sure, Foxborough, I know.
What about the 25%? You talked about 25%. What does that come out in dollars, or approximate dollars and cents?
It would be 25% of 5, let's say 5 million for the sake of discussion.
It's quite a bit of money that we can get back.
Over a million, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Mr. Richard Terry. Name and precinct number. When you get to the microphone, please.
Richard Terry, Precinct 8. On Page 11, you talked about the blending process of all our wells together. What is the benefit of that, you know, will mitigate this issue while, during the construction phase?
Yeah, so the state, good question. The state doesn't give you credit for blending all your, in our case, we have eight sources. They don't, they don't give you credit for blending all, taking the average of all eight. If that were the case, it would be below 20. When they talk about blending, they mean like, if you had a cluster of three wells on the same site, blending those. So you can blend way, you can blend your way out of this if you, if you had all three wells, if you had one well that was 25, let's say, and another one that was 18, and another one that was 10, and you averaged those out, you could take the average. They give you credit for that. But you can't blend different sources, you know? So, but what's actually happening, you know, in the network, in the distribution network is those sources are blending, you know, throughout town, so it's just...
So, are we going to be blending or not?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Elliot Hanson. Name and precinct number.
Elliot Hanson, Precinct 1. Is this thing on?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Given the amount of PFAS that you're finding in that well, and given the charge of charcoal filter system, could you hazard a guess as to, if it maintained that 22, and we brought it down to, say, 18, would you hazard a guess as to how long that charcoal would last and how much it recharges?
Yeah, so let's say, for the sake of argument, it's 20, and when you do an alternatives analysis, in this case, carbon treatment, we would have to bring it down below at least 10. They're not going to say 18 is good enough. They want you to bring it down to at least half.
Okay.
And then the second part is about once a year, we're going to have to re-change the charcoal, and that's going to cost about 50 grand a year to do that.
Now, the old charcoal, where it's got the PFAS in it, is that going to be qualified as hazardous waste?
Well, we can ship it somewhere, and they can regenerate it, and we get it back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next up is John Lenahan. Name and precinct number, please.
John Lenahan, Precinct 1. It just seems like the risk of all those illnesses that you ticked off might be greater than keeping that well online while we're enacting this work. I don't know if you can just explain a little bit more about your decision-making there? I mean, if we have eight sources and we take one offline?
Yeah, so that's a really loaded question. I mean, this, but what I mean is, 25 years ago, you can only, laboratory equipment only had the ability to test in the pots per million. Then it was pots per billion. So the just ability for the labs to test in pots per trillion is just, just coming on in the last year or two, two years. So, like, seven or eight years ago, we tested for PFAS in pots per billion and didn't find any. That's because the detection level was not enough. So, the PFAS has been there always for the last 70 years, since, you know, in the 40s and early 50s. So we've been drinking the same water. Nothing's changed, except the ability to test it. Well, I...
You can ask questions, please, the microphone. Let's not answer that.
No, fair, fair.
You want to ask one last question? We're going to move on. Anybody else have questions? Vanenokian, name and precinct.
Mr. Moderator, just a point of information.
Sure.
There seems to be a discussion here through previous speakers about essentially the urgency of getting this done, if I'm picking this up correctly. And this was brought up at the Finance Committee as to why we'd be doing this now if it's not going to happen until 2024, and if Mr. McNulty could correct me if I'm wrong, we were told at the Finance Committee that if this were approved now, that it could actually be started before 2024. And that was what was brought up at the Finance Committee. So if that's correct, could you please confirm that?
Well, it's, it would be expedited as fast as possible. There's the loan program to borrow the money, and then as soon as that's done, the design starts right away. When the design's done, then you bid it and construct it, so...
Because we were told at the Finance Committee that, because this exact question was brought up as to why, why this is happening now. It's not going to go on till '24, and we were told that if this is approved, it could move quicker than waiting till 2024. That's what we were told at the Finance Committee. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you. I think we're all set. Any other questions? Please rise and state your name and precinct number, please.
Jim Guerin, Precinct 6. I'm looking at the numbers here and wondering to myself, what are... I'm looking at the numbers here and wondering to myself, what do we do between now and when this thing is completed in 2022, 2025? Do the people who are drinking this water continue to drink it, or are we going to shut it offline till then?
So, through you, Mr. Moderator, so there is a, the Plain Street Treatment Plan has a tap available to the public. That's been noted, we've given that notification to the public at least three times now, I think. So if anybody has concerns about drinking, you know, PFAS contaminated water, they can go to that source and get, get some water that's PFAS compliant there. You know, that's, that's a judgment they have to make based on the, you know, their own personal feelings.
Okay. A couple more questions? You have one more question?
Okay. How long is it going to take to backflush this, this filter media when, when you finally determine that it's plugged in and has to be backrushed?
Yes.
How, how do you determine this needs to be backrushed?
So we'll be, as of now, like I said, we sample monthly, and once the plant is online, we'll continue to test monthly and possibly even more frequently, depends on what the DEP stipulations are for us running the plant. But as soon as it, it starts to rise, we will, we'll backwash it and we'll change the media as needed.
And how long is it going to take to backwash?
Backwashing is a matter of minutes, then.
10 minutes or 20 minutes? I'm going to, 500 gallons a minute here, now we're going through this.
Right, so.
Let's not have any cross debate, just for your favor. If you want to follow up your little question or detail.
Well, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Guerin. Next up is Ian Bronson, name and precinct number, please. Denise, just push it up towards you, the button. There you go.
Denise Bronston, precinct two. I suggest people buy bottled water, especially for infants.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else before we move into?
Comment, Mr. Moderator?
Sure.
Just make sure you do your research on the bottled water, because some of that has PFAS in it.
Thank you.
Not gallon, not gallon, Poland Springs water doesn't, I call them.
Okay.
Thank you, okay. All right, at this point in time, I don't see any more people asking technical questions. We're going to move on into prone con discussion or debate, three minutes per town meeting rep. Is there anyone that? Cynthia Walsh, please rise if you can, and name and precinct number, please.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. We have a problem, we have a solution, let's vote yes.
Okay, that's not a motion, but thank you for offering that advice. Anybody else? Eric Coleman? Name and precinct.
Eric Coleman, precinct five. It sounds like the water is unsafe for some of us, and if it is unsafe, I suggest we stop the well until this is repaired, but certainly I am in favor of this motion.
All right, thank you. Johnny Zavino, name and precinct number, please.
Johnny Zavino, precinct four. I just want to make a point that was made during the Finance Committee hearings, is that the federal guidelines that were put out on this were set at 70 pots per trillion. It's the state of Massachusetts that chose to go down to 20. I mean, this is, you're talking pots per trillion here. I, I wouldn't want to see people going to a panic that there's something in the water. Now, I'm not a doctor, I can't tell you it's not going to hurt at all or what have you, but just keep in mind of how small this is, and the state went even much farther than what the federal guidelines were. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Anybody else? Moving once. Janice Esdale, I'll bring the microphone to you. Thank you, Eric. Have that microphone, Janice, just your name and precinct number, please.
Janice Esdale, precinct five. I'm, I'm just wondering if this PFAS can be absorbed through the skin if you're taking a shower with it, if you know?
Well, we're not really at questions right now, we're in the prone con debate.
Oh, okay, I'll be back.
Okay. We're on prone con debate, or comments. Mr. Cohen, go ahead, precinct name, uh, name and number, please.
Cohen, precinct five. This town usually doesn't act fast enough. Now we act fast enough, and we have all kinds of questions, why are we acting so fast? We have to have good water, this town has always had good water. We did. At least when I moved here 50 years ago, it was good. And to me, to invest in good water and safety for people, let's do it, and let's do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Murphy, please rise. Questions removed. Okay, seconded by Judge Stolinski. Motion was to move the question by Peter Murphy, seconded by Judge, takes a 2/3 vote. I'm going to do a voice vote unless there's doubt among the moderator. So all those, obviously moving the question means cutting off debate. Vote on the question if it passes. All those in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose. Hearing none, the debate is cut off. Okay, the motion is on the screen. Oh, actually, do we need a, someone have a, hold on a second, do we want to have a summary? Do we need a summary?
No.
I don't think so either. Thank you all. All right. Just a moment, please. Don't vote yet. Hands off the clickers. Raise your hands up. Just a moment, please. There's a point of order of, for those who don't know how to use the clicker, Stephanie, could you just remind people?
Okay, so you can, you'll be able to push yes, no, and abstain, and when the light is green, that means you voted. If your light is red, press the button a little harder, and it will, you'll, it'll show on the little screen on your clicker. Now, if you keep going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, we're going to yell at you. So don't do that, and I'm looking at you, mischief maker. One is yes, two is no, three is abstention.
Okay, please vote now, you have 20 seconds. And when the voting is over, the town clerk will announce the vote. When the voting is over, the town moderator will announce the vote. Motion passes, 105 yes, 5 no, 0 abstentions. Motion does pass. Okay, now we move on to Article Two, collective bargaining DPW, that appears on page two. Van Anokian, could you please read the proposed motion, please?
That the town vote to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Stoughton Public Works Association for the period of FY 2023 through FY 2025.
All right, is there a second? Who seconded? I just need a name for the, Cynthia Walsh? Okay, Finance Committee report, Van Anokian, please.
Finance Committee voted 13 to 0 to recommend the town meeting as written in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Anokian.
There's a note on there, the funding for FY 20, yeah, I'll read the note too, FY 2023. General fund is $29,116, Water Enterprise, $9,618, Sewer Enterprise, $9,544.
Thank you for that report, sir. Okay, this time.
That's all within the 2023 budget, those numbers.
You are reading the budget? Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. All right, at this time, the presenter is interim town manager, Mark Tisdale. Mark, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, this article is for the DPW MOA. It's mostly housekeeping items, as you can see is the backup in your book. I'll mention some of the larger scale items. Working out of grade, got class, reclassified, it used to be if you worked out of grade, that employee would work in the next classification higher. Now it clears it up, and there's going to be a 5% increase over the current hourly rate. Holidays, adding Juneteenth is a holiday as all contracts will be doing from this point forward. Foul weather gear, they're getting $800 for a while now, they've increased it to 1,000, 1,100, and 1,200 over the next course of the next three years. The, the almighty saying, the living and breathing award that town meeting says every year has been eliminated from this contract, the longevity award, not award, geez, called it an award. We've actually eliminated it and rolled it into the base pay of the employees and added longevity steps to the grid. So if you worked for five years, you would get a 1%, increase. For 15 years, you'd get a 1.75% increase, and for 25 years, you'd get a 3%. So there's no more, you know, 700, 800, 1,000, $2,000 longevities that you get paid right, right about this time of year. They get rolled into the base pays, then you got longevity steps which fall in line with what many other towns do in the area. Each grid in this MOA goes up by 2% each year, which is pretty, pretty standard. That is what we've assumed for increases for other unions and for non-union personnel for FY 24. Again, there's some other small things that got clarified in here, such as grievance procedures and things of that nature. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, this is the time for technical questions. Anybody have any questions? Janice Schneider, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Is this thing working? Yes, it's working. Mr. Moderator, through you, I have a question about the memorandum. In paragraph three.
Janice, excuse me, could you just pull that microphone down a little bit?
There we go.
Thank you.
In paragraph three, it says, effective July 1, 2013. Should that be 2023? I'm looking at the memorandum of agreement on page 20. In paragraph three, it says revise effective, et cetera, effective July 1, 2013. Should that be 2023?
Hi, Deanna Chatsko, I'm in HR. No, they leave that effective July 1, 2013 was, the wording was that all new hires shall be required to obtain a CDL within 12 months and must continue to, to possess a CDL as a condition of employment. They leave that 2013 was the date that they required them to have it at the hire date, and now they've changed it. They have to, they have to get it within 12 months now. So they always use the original date in the, in the MOA of when it went into effect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Janice, what precinct number are you, just for the record?
Precinct six.
Precinct six, thank you. Anybody else for technical? Okay, we're moving along. Pro and con comments or debate? Anybody for prone con comments or debate? Seeing none? All right, we're going to proceed. Let me just make sure we're ready to vote. Ready? All right, the article's up on the screen. Voting begins now, you have 20 seconds.
Can you make it more boomer friendly? That voting screen?
I didn't understand what you said, mister.
Make it bigger.
Make it bigger?
Boomer friendly.
Sorry, that's the way it is right now. All right, in results, motion passes 104 yes, for no, one abstention. Zero abstention, correction, zero abstention. I'll read that again. Motion passes 104 yes, for no, zero abstention. Thank you all. Article three, that starts off on page two, at the bottom of page two. I'm going to ask Mr. Van Anokian to read the, read the proposed motion, please.
That the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2,948,500 to supplement the FY 2023 school budget for the purpose of eliminating student fees for transportation, athletics, and student activities, and increasing athletic opportunities for students' grades six through eight, as well as hiring needed staff for class size reduction, English language learners, special education, youth at risk, central registration, literacy and math support, full-time paraprofessional support, grades K through two, as well as extended day and summer programming, and that to meet this appropriation, $2,948,500 be raised in the FY 2023 tax levy.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Johnny Zavino. Report, Van Anokian, please.
Finance Committee voted 13 to 0 to recommend the town meeting as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Intergovernmental Relations Committee report, Agavan Schumaka, please.
IGR voted 5 to 0 to recommend a town meeting as written in the warrant.
Thank you both. Okay, at this time, the presenter is Dr. Robb, Superintendent of the Stoughton Schools. Dr. Robb?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and town meeting representatives. Before I begin talking about Article Three, I'd like to present just a brief preamble and explain how we got here through Chapter 70. Every year, the state provides communities with Chapter 70 school aid, and it typically goes up a little bit every year. The funding is finalized with the state budget in July after our town budget process is complete. And the school district receives the funding through special town meeting. That's the normal procedure, and that has been done for many years here in Stoughton. The amount of Chapter 70 funding we receive is based on our spending requirements, and what's different this year is for FY 23, we received instead of our normal small increase, the state recalculated our spending requirements and recalculated them for Stoughton as well. So they increased our spending requirements by $5 million, or 12%. At the same time, they increased our state aid by $4 million. So I just want to be clear, they increased the amount of money that we're required to spend on our students, but they, at the same time, that's about $5 million, but at the same time, they only increased our Chapter 70 aid by $4 million. So we're getting there, we're beginning to close the gap, but we're not there yet. And I know members who have been in town meeting for many years know that the schools have traditionally been underfunded, and so this is an opportunity to begin to catch up a little bit, but it's important to remember that at the same time they increased our Chapter 70 aid, they also increased our spending requirements. So let me begin with Article Three. This provides funding that's critical for all students. Many of our students suffered learning loss and social emotional issues during the pandemic. Over the past two years, we've been able to use our ESER funds to help during the pandemic and into this recovery period. The problem with ESER funding is it's not sustainable and not available after 2024. The additional Chapter 70 funding the district received this year in FY 23 allows us to move FTEs and services from the ESER to the budget and their. and therefore provide that long-term sustainability from year to year moving forward. We can also add some additional FTEs and services, critical for the long-term success of our students. As well, at the end of our ESER funding, at the end of two thousand twenty-four, there will be services that we no longer need, and those will expire with the ESER funding. These are services that we want to continue beyond that. The Chapter Seventy funding given to the district allows us to maintain lower class sizes, which we've seen over and over again lead to student success. Students will have free transportation and the elimination of athletic and music activity fees. We'll bring critical special education resources from the ESER grant into the district operating budget, providing long-term sustainability for all of these products and services and positions. The school district, a few examples. The school district will be able to provide additional literacy and math coaches, board-certified behavior analysts, as well as needed English language learner support, both teaching and paraprofessional support at all levels. The funding also supports needed acceleration academic programs for our neediest learners, as they're still coping with the setbacks from COVID-nineteen, both emotional and educational. At a recent school committee meeting, we heard firsthand how these acceleration academies were used very effectively in our elementary schools. Our students demonstrated remarkable progress, and we heard about one group that went from mid-first grade all the way to third grade as a result of the hard work that they did in these accelerated acceleration academies. These have helped our elementary students in all schools recover. In a post-pandemic world, we need this funding. This funding is available for us. The state gave us this funding. We also find that when a student comes from another country, we don't always have a clear picture of what they know and what they don't know. The acceleration academies have helped us fill those gaps. Allowing us to fund a combination of current ESER-funded positions and needed new positions, this Chapter Seventy funding came at just the right time. It allows us to be sustainable into the future, and it also allows us to meet the increased spending requirements the state has given us as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions on Article Three.
Thank you, Dr. Robb. This is the time for technical questions. Mr. Lurie, name and precinct number, please.
David Lurie, precinct six. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to Dr. Rab. You mentioned that the mandatory, well, requirement by the state of five million dollars, which is a million dollars short because they're giving us four, correct? So what is the penalty that the state imposes on Stoughton for not spending the extra million?
Over time, at this time, there's no direct penalty, but what it does is it impacts the services that we have with our students right now. If Stoughton sustains the lack of funding over time, then that can impact the quality of our Chapter Seventy funding moving forward.
They don't, there's no penalty from the state?
Not immediately, but it could long-term impact.
Understood. One more question through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Rowe, the town accountant. It was mentioned that the ESER funding that came into the town was already being spent at least through the beginning of the school year. Where does that money go? Does it come to the general fund before it goes to the school? Does it go to, you know, some kind of revolving fund? Where does it go for them to be able to appropriate those funds?
So the ESER fund, excuse me, Mr. Moderator, Bill Rowe, town accountant. So the ESER funding is a grant, just like a Title I or, you know, special education grant. It goes into the, not the general fund, what is called the special revenue fund, which holds all the grants, the revolving funds, et cetera. And that can be spent without appropriation for the purposes as outlined by the grantor.
Okay, so it was never...
Unlike Chapter seventy, Chapter Seventy is to reimburse the town for the mandate that Chapter Seventy requires, that the town spend a certain dollar amount on education. So that's general fund money, but the ESER, that's special revenue grant.
Yeah, so this body never appropriated those funds?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Tim Curtin, name and precinct number, please.
Tim Curtin, precinct four. Just a couple of questions for you. So the money gets appropriated by the state July first. Has to go through town meeting, through a special town meeting in order to go to you. After it comes to you, are there any special parameters as to how you can use that money? Is there an expiration date on it, as in you have to use it at a certain time? Can you only use it for certain things? Can you just expand on that?
Sure. It needs to be used in this fiscal year, in FY two thousand twenty-three. So the state provided the additional Chapter Seventy money for us immediately in FY two thousand twenty-three. There were three overall reasons why we received the additional funds for English language learners, our additional English language learners, special education and low-income students. But we can use the money for all the students in the district and for the benefit of all students. But it does have to be spent in FY two thousand twenty-three.
So what happens if next year, the amount of money that they're putting, that they're giving to you in this Chapter Seventy money, isn't the same?
Right now, there's no reason to think that it won't be. So we are planning that this money is sustainable into FY two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five, based on the formula. So the formula is based on our student population, and we don't see our student population changing. If anything, we've seen our enrollment increase, and we've seen our enrollment increase in those three areas. So we're confident that this funding will be sustainable into FY twenty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Vaughn Fox, precinct, excuse me, let me at least take your name and precinct number.
Vaughn Fox, precinct one. I count about eleven or twelve things on there that this is going to be paying for. This is close to three million dollars. It's a lot of money. I wondered if you could expand on each of those items there, how that money is being spent there, and the amount maybe, and how it's done. And also additionally, why is it necessary right now and not in May?
Sure, thank you for your question. So we're going to be using the funding, and it's listed right in the article, is some of the specifics of the funding. So we're going to be using the funding to provide paraprofessional support, K to two, at all levels.
To explain my question.
Sure.
Yeah, it doesn't say specifically what each of the items are. It just basically reiterates that. Things like English language learners, what does that mean?
Sure.
In money it's being spent? Or the other thing, central registration, what does that mean? And why are we spending money on that?
Let me expand upon, on those two in particular. So we see our English language learner population going up, and particularly this year, we have over five hundred English language learners in the district right now, of a district of about thirty-five hundred students. And that's gone up, even from last year, it was about four hundred and twenty, four hundred and thirty to five hundred. So we need additional teaching support to accommodate those additional students, as well as paraprofessional support for those students. We instituted a central registration office this year in order to provide a clearinghouse and make sure that our registration for students when they come into the district is being done in a consistent format. And so allowing for that makes sure that students that attend the Stoughton public schools actually live here in Stoughton. And we found with a central registration office, we can provide a much clearer platform and a much more consistent experience for parents as they come in, and new parents as they come in. So those are some of the things that we're spending the money on. We're also spending the money on special education resources that we need as well.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me.
I apologize, then.
I think we can move on. Well, sometimes you don't get what you always want. If you want to reset your question, I'll give you one more chance to reset your question a little finer. You have to use the microphone, mister. Just one question here.
It's the same question. The question was, there's about eleven things on there. And one of the question was, what is the reason for spending it? What is it? Another question is, how much is the, how do you justify the amount of money? What is the amount of money on each of those things? Not just that central registration as an example. Touch on each one of these things to give us an idea where this money's going.
Sure. So the Chapter Seventy money is given to the school district for the benefit of the students and the benefit of all the students. The additional money that we received this year, we received primarily for the three categories that I mentioned, English language learners, special education, as well as low-income students, to benefit those students. The, as we look at how we're going to spend those monies, we need to make sure that we're spending those monies in those areas. So by eliminating transportation fees, by eliminating other fees, we're helping students who are of low income. By any other specifics, we really look at each one of those different areas and make sure that we're spending it in those areas, and also to benefit all students. So I typically wouldn't go into each individual detail line. We look at a bottom line, but those are the categories that we're spending the money in.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Erdam, name and precinct number, please.
Erdam Urath, precinct seven. I, Dr. Robb, the explanation was very helpful. And I also understand my fellow town meetings members' concerns because normally we get a request like three million dollars, there is an explanation...
Is there a question here, sir?
I'm just going to make a suggestion. There is an explanation that you started and then break down of the cost. So that's what I like to see in the future town meeting. I'm certainly going to vote for this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for technical questions? George Stolinski, name and precinct number.
George Stolinski, precinct two. The question I have here, it says, you're going to be eliminating student fees for transportation, athletics, et cetera, et cetera. You've already collected money this year for these fees. Are the parents being reimbursed for the fees that they've already paid for these items?
Yes.
This year?
Yes. We'll be immediately reimbursing after a special town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none? Okay, Sandra Suza, please come to one of the microphones if you can, or we can bring it to you. Get there, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Sandra Suza, precinct one. So this states that you want to hire some additional staff in the paraprofessional support for K-two. So we're already at the end of November. So do you plan to hire them for this current year? So it will be new staff brought on when?
Almost immediately, as soon as we can post and hire them, yes.
And they'll be, they'll be kept on for the next school year?
Yes, this is sustainable funding into next year.
Okay. So do you expect them to be starting, say, the first of the year?
If not sooner, if we can.
Okay. So these staff members don't currently work for the school department?
Some do. The ones that are currently on the ESER funding do, and that would be switched over to budget. But some of the positions are new as well.
Okay. Do you know how many positions?
Sure. There's fourteen point eight FTEs currently on the ESER and twenty-two new.
Okay, so twenty-two new positions? And then those fourteen would be brought over?
Currently that are working for us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else before we move on? Sors, name and precinct number, please.
No, Sors, precinct two. Do we know the difference between, do we have any illegal alien children versus legal alien children?
That's out of order. We don't want to go down that road.
You've been down that road?
We don't want to go there.
Don't want to go there?
Out of order. Do we have a question regarding this article?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sors. Anybody else? Please state your name and precinct number, please.
Rose Eckler, precinct one. I have a question about the transportation fees. So when my kids were in school, at the beginning of the year, you would decide, can I afford to do these transportation fees or not? And if you decided not to, then you were taking care of transportation on your own for your kids. So if you get rid of all transportation fees, will those parents that couldn't afford it or didn't opt in for transportation, can their kids now join?
We'll have an opportunity. We currently have a waitlist that we're going to be working off of, and part of this funding does allow for an additional bus. And so we're going to be doing what we can this year to accommodate what we can. And then we'll have an early process in May for next year to make sure that people can sign up early.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we're going to move into pro and con debate or comments. Anybody pro and con debate, comments? David Lurie, please state your name and precinct number, please.
David Lurie, precinct six. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you. Oh, actually, to the, we're doing comments, pro and con debate. I'm going to be voting in favor of this. I'm very pleased that the funding is actually going to go to expanded services and not just getting absorbed into the budget like we see in many other budgets. So this is, I think it's terrific. And I just want to go down memory lane a little bit. Some of the new people here may not remember. Over the years, we've been told that we were short on the way we funded, that our town was short, I'm going to say it, shortchanging our children. We weren't doing, we weren't stepping up, we were falling short on the average cost per student. We used to see the statistics every year. I used to do the math on what they used to tell us. This is predecessors to Dr. Rab, so it has no, nothing to do with them. But they used to say that we were about a thousand dollars short per student. With about thirty-six hundred students, you rounded out to almost about four million dollars a year. What's interesting about what you're going to see tonight is that the math on all of these adds up to four million dollars a year. But guess what? It's not coming out of our general fund, it's coming in as Chapter Seventy grant money from the state. So I want to tell everybody that we've all been vindicated. We no longer have to feel guilty about shortchanging our children because all they had to do was go to the state and ask them, are you sure your calculations are right? Because it seems like we're about four million short. And once you know it, this year it comes in, we get our four million dollars. So congratulations, we, and by the way, we give the schools every year exactly what they ask for. We never short, we never, they say, we need this, they get it. This body always gives the schools what they ask for. As far as coming up short by that million dollars, I just want to point out, when we used to ask the previous administration, what would you do if you had four million dollars to cover that average cost per student? Everything in this list is exactly what that administration told us. We need better opportunities for athletics and drama and music. We need to get ELL up, math support, especially around special ed. All those things are being addressed now, just as they said they would do when we needed that four million dollars. So don't feel bad about approving exactly what they asked for with that one or two percent increase every year, because we've been doing our job for all those years. So we're all good. That's all I want to say.
Cynthia Walsh, name and precinct number, please.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. Move the question.
Second. That's to cut off debate. Who's seconding that? I just need a name. George Stolinski, among others. Thank you all. All right, this is to cut off debate. Again, by voice vote. If there's any doubt in the moderator, fine, I'll have to use the clickers. Okay, this will cut off debate, then we'll go to the voting. All those in favor of the cut off debate on this question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none. The motion to cut off debate passes. We're going to go right to the vote. Ready? We're ready. Please begin voting now. You have twenty seconds. Question three, motion passes, ninety-seven yes, seven no, one abstention. Thank you. And now we're going to proceed to Article Four, which is on page three, right in the middle there. School safety and security dual entry improvements at the DAW and Givens Elementary Schools. I'm going to ask Vaughn Anokian to please read the proposed motion.
That the town vote to appropriate the sum of six hundred thousand dollars for dual entrance security vestibules at the DAW and Givens Elementary Schools, including the addition of a wall with entry doors inside the existing lobby, approximately ten feet inside the existing doors, a security window to be installed into the office wall with a transaction window, cameras installed on the exterior doors and in the vestibule along with the dual entry buzzer system, and that to meet this appropriation, six hundred thousand dollars be raised in the FY two thousand twenty-three tax levy.
Seconded by John Zavino. All right, I'm going to ask for the Finance Committee report, Mr. Anokian.
Finance Committee voted 12 to 0 to 1 to recommend the town meeting as written in the warrant.
Thank you, sir. Intergovernmental Relations Committee report. Agavon Schumaka, please.
IGR voted 5 to 0 to recommend the town meeting as written in the warrant.
Thank you. At this point, the presenter is Dr. Robb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting. Article Four is a capital article to partially use the remaining FY 2023 Chapter 70 funding to design and build a dual entry vestibule at the Daw and the Gibbons Elementary School. I call your attention to page 57 in your warrant books, and you can take a look at the current vestibule at the Daw, and since the Daw and the Gibbons have the same footprint, we can talk about one and also understand that it's the same for both. The current standard for building entrances is a two-door vestibule, much like the one you enter today when you came into the high school. The second entrance provides a holding place for adults and students even, or adults when they want to pick up a student, and for students before they're allowed in. The second entrance is also a strong deterrent for anyone who wants to enter a building with bad intentions. Research has shown that someone who has bad intentions entering a school building will often be jittery or nervous, not quite sure what they want to do, and not always have a clear focus. The second entrance allows them an opportunity to cool off and talk to somebody before getting into the building, or not even being allowed to get into the building. It's often enough to calm someone down and allow them to perhaps speak to someone without becoming a threat to the rest of the school. Right now, at the Daw and the Gibbons, if someone is buzzed into the school, they can actually walk away from the office and go right down to one of the classrooms. The second entrance will allow someone to talk to a receptionist without being in the freezing cold, but still protected from the rest of the school. As we look at the facade of both the Daw and the Gibbons, there's no change to the exterior, so somebody driving by now and somebody driving by after the renovations will see the exact same exterior. The second vestibule, if you look on page 57, would be dropped about 10 feet into the school, perhaps at the, right at the end of the entry mats there, and a security window would be installed to the left of the new vestibule, similar to what's here at the high school. The lobbies of both the Daw and the Gibbons are large enough to accept the central entrance, and it would be fully handicapped and accessible to meet current ADA codes with cameras and a buzzing system so that we could communicate with the person and see them through the camera as well. The interior doors would be similar to what you might see at the middle school, so it would be an interior door and then a little window toward the top, meeting ADA compliance. After these two schools are upgraded, the only school without this dual entrance will be the South. And I, just to let the members of town meeting know, I visited the South last week with Mrs. Husanyi, and we're discussing things we can do to enhance security at the South with better camera imaging, speakers and sound, and perhaps extolling some swipes to some of those doors. On the town meeting table outside, I provided a brief chart that shows the full extent of the $600,000 for the article, the construction estimate, plus the additional parts of it that we're going to need in order to successfully complete the project. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that is the dual entry vestibule for the Daw and the Gibbons.
Thank you, Dr. Robb. Okay, this is the time for the technical questions. Mr. Cohen, we need to, can someone bring him a microphone? Thank you, Eric. You're welcome. Mr. Cohen, please state your name and precinct number.
Robert Cohen, precinct five. I love the idea of the second doors. Could you tell me, are those doors gonna be protected like a bulletproof door? Something strong? In today's society, you know what goes on, and I just want to make sure the children are protected in that second door.
Absolutely. We are going to be looking at different opportunities that we have to reinforce that glass. We don't talk publicly about some of the security measures, but understood that that's on our radar.
And could I recommend something for you two over at the Given School? When you light up a building, you cut the incidents there. If you go over to the Given.
Is this gonna be a question, Mr. Cohen? I just don't want to get into that.
Yes, it is. I think that Given School in the front and on the side should be adequately lit. The school is absolutely open for vandalism, and I think there's a few more schools there too that should, just a suggestion to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You should end it with a like, just a question to look at? All right. All right, who's next? You're all set? Mr. Guerin? Name and precinct number, please.
Jim Guerin, precinct six. I'm totally in favor of this article, but I, I'm looking at the quote on page 48, and it says, a security window with the Level 1 bullet-resistant blade. What does bullet-resistant mean?
Let me turn this over to Mrs. Husanyi, my Director of Maintenance and Operations.
So the, police officers may be able to tell you, there is really no such thing as ballistic proof glass, and there are different levels of security. Again, without getting into what the, the concept is in terms of what we do within our schools. Level 1 refers to basically the industry standard. I can tell you that aside from the bullet resistance, the tests that I've seen have talked to the shatterproofness of somebody trying to use a rifle butt or some other means of trying to gain entry, and it being up to a six-minute delay. So the levels just refer to the different types of resistance, granted.
It, somehow, somehow it seems to be bullet-resistant. Does that mean the bullet doesn't go through it?
I don't know enough about the specifics of each level, but.
You know, and bullet is, is, I mean, we have all kinds of guns, we're talking about 22s, and we're talking about AR-15s and.
All right, let, Mr. Guerin, let her answer the question the best she can, to the best of her ability.
I don't know that I have any better answer than that. You're right, there's, there's different levels of ballistics, and it is, Level 1 is thought of as the industry standard for protecting not only school buildings, but all buildings.
Second question, Mr. Moderator, if you would. I'm looking at the glass aluminum storefront entries. Does a glass door have bullet-resistant glass?
So what, what you're looking at at this point is that we had contracted with DRA through our House Doctor contract to start the process for the design. This is not a final design, so what you're seeing in the estimate reflects the type of storefront window that one would put in a school. There are also allowances in there for security for us to do whatever it is, again, to gain that level of security, which would be reflective of what was done in the high school, the industry standard. So it is not a final estimate because there was not a final design. So we had, DRA, as I said, in an effort to get this put together so we could present it, with the hopes that it can be constructed this summer. We're at that schematic design stage, if you will, of, of the project, and the estimate is based on a very conservative estimate of what they expect we will need to do. But the aluminum is, and the aluminum doors are the storefront doors that are typically there and are currently in the front of our building, at the Daw and the Gibbons.
We expect all the contingencies to take care of these, these little.
Yes.
Potential extras.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, just one point of clarification.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Robb.
We don't typically talk in the public about the security measures that we take for the safety of our students. As you can imagine, we don't want to put out publicly what all the different security improvements we have for the safety of our students. We want to make sure our students are safe, and we want to make sure they're protected, and we do follow standard guidelines around those.
Thank you, Dr. Robb. Mr. Lenahan? Anybody else? Jerry McDonald, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Jerry McDonald, precinct four. I just have a question on the wording of the motion. I don't think I've seen, it says including enterprise funds, and I don't think I've seen that in a school spending article before, and I'd like an explanation on that. What enterprise funds are they looking to take money out of? Can they take money out of the enterprise funds?
I can answer that, Mr. Moderator. When we originally wrote the motion, it was overwritten a bit, and then when we wrote the proposed motion, we narrowed it down to be appropriate. So there's no enterprise funding here. All of these fundings are taken from the FY 2023 Chapter 70.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Inzavino.
What the previous speaker was ref. Just, don't get the article confused with the motion. The enterprise was in the article the way it was written, the motion does not have enterprise funds in it. People just need to make, make that clear.
Thank you for the clarification, it is two different things, at least in this case. All right, we're still in the technical question area. Anybody else for questions? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move in pro and con debate or comments. Anybody? See anybody? All right, so we're gonna move right to the vote. Let's just make sure it's ready. We're ready? Okay, please vote using your clickers, you have 20 seconds. Article Four passes. Yes, 108, no, 2, 0 abstentions. Declare that a vote. Article Five, which appears on page four, school safety and security video camera improvements at elementary schools. I'm gonna ask Von Anokian to read the proposed motion.
That the town vote to appropriate the sum of $452,409 for security camera upgrade grades K through 5 as printed in the warrant, and that to meet this appropriation, $452,409 be raised in the FY 2023 tax levy.
Seconded by John Inzavino, thank you. Finance Committee report by Von Anokian.
Finance Committee voted 13 to 0 to recommend the town meeting as written in the warrant.
Intergovernmental Relations Committee report by Agavon Schumaka, please.
IGR voted 5 to 0 to recommend the town meeting as written in the warrant.
Thank you very much. The presenter on this article is Dr. Robb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and before I begin, I just wanted to say thank you on the prior two articles, on behalf of myself and the students of Stoughton, as well as the school committee. I promise my remarks are going to get shorter as each article goes on, so as we get into this next one. This uses the remaining FY 2023 Chapter 70 funding for needed camera upgrades to maintain safe levels of security in each of the five elementary buildings grades K to 5. The high school has state-of-the-art security, and the middle school has been upgraded, so this article focuses on the five elementary schools K to 5. Current building and security camera setups include minimal coverage in common areas, and they don't provide full coverage of all spaces. Our SPS technology team reached out to manufacturers to request a full security analysis for our elementary schools. The current camera systems that we have are over 10 years old. This project not only includes additional cameras and some replacement cameras, but more importantly, it includes increased server capacity to handle the modern camera storage needs. If you have any recollection of what storage needs were 10 years ago and what they are today, we're into the terabyte range and the multi-terabyte range. This needs upgraded servers to be able to store that video. The project provides these needed security upgrades in all five of our elementary schools. It's both interior and exterior cameras, and will greatly enhance our ability to cover these spaces, parking lots and playgrounds. So I'm happy to answer any questions, with the same understanding that I don't want to get too detailed into where the cameras are or what they point to, because it's all part of our security protocol to protect our students.
Thank you, Dr. Robb. Okay, this is the period for technical questions. Peter Murphy, please come to the microphone, state your name and precinct number, please.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Who monitors these cameras when they're active?
The principals have access, as well as our Director of Maintenance and Operations.
And the other question I have, when you upgrade, is it possible that you could have an access point where the police could tap into that? Say if there's a crisis there, they would be able to access the cameras live while something's going on?
My understanding is right now they can access upon request, but I know this is something that has been discussed in the past, so the access is upon request if they want to see a tape. They can make that request to the building principal, but to have live access is a different situation, which is not part of this.
Is that, is that something that could be part of, in other words, an add-on later on that they could?
It, it would be a whole separate discussion, in terms of any live act.
Thank you. Still in the technical question. Mr. Cohen, can someone bring a microphone? Thank you, Eric, for doing this. This is Eric Coleman, thank you for bringing the microphone to Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen, name and precinct number, please.
Robert Cohen, precinct five. If we listen today to our representative in Washington, Homeland Security, he's the chairman of that committee. We talk about homeland, in case we want to go further on in this, we have a friend in Washington that I'm sure will help us put the best we can into our schools, just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is the time for questions, sir. Just a friendly reminder, that's all, thank you. All right, any other technical questions, please? Janice Schneider, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Janice Schneider, precinct six. When can these be installed?
The plan is over the summertime, realistically.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we're gonna move right into pro and con debate or comments. Anybody pro and con debate, comments? Dave Laurie?
Dave Laurie, precinct six. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm in favor of this article, just like it was the other two. I just want to point out, what's interesting about the whole set of articles is the fact that the full amount would be $4 million. You notice how three-quarters of it went to the operation, and the other two went to capital expenditures? Something we haven't done in a long time, it's probably been three years, that we haven't had subcommittees in the finance, I'm in the Finance Committee, and we haven't had subcommittees. It started because of COVID, and we haven't been able to really dive in deep with the different departments, including school. And some of the things I learned when I used to be able to go to subcommittees was the principal goal and directive that the administration has at the schools is to take care of faculty, students, and capital expenses for their buildings. All three. It's like a three-legged stool. This addresses all three of those, if you look at all three of the articles. I think the thing to watch for as you go forward is that that $4 million is dealt with in the same way for future budgets. It's important to pay attention to subsequent town meetings to make sure that we're seeing the distribution across all three, and not have all of the Chapter 70 money find itself into only two of the three. We should always expect that the expenses go to all three legs of the stool. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Walsh, name and precinct number, please.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. Move the question.
We only hear one, one speaker, but I'll leave it up to the town meeting representatives. So moving the question cuts off debate. The moderator is gonna ask for a voice vote again, and must be clear in the mind of the moderator, and it passes, cutting off debate. So by voice vote, all those in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, debate has been cut off, we're gonna move to voting. This is on Article Five. Ready? We are ready. Please vote now, you have 20 seconds. Article Five passes. 107 yes, 2 no, 0 abstentions. Declare that a vote. Moving on to Article Six. Thank you, Dr. Robb, for your presentations. Okay, I believe Article Six is gonna be dismissed? Okay, do I have a motion to dismiss on Article Six? Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, Article six been moved for dismissal by Judge Stolinski, seconded by Scott Carrara. All right, by voice vote, hopefully there's no doubt in the mind of the moderator, by voice vote, all those in favor of dismissing Article six, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I declare Article six is now dismissed. All right, Article seven, I believe that's going to be dismissed, too. Do I have a motion to dismiss Article seven? Again, uh, Judge Stolinski made the motion to move Article seven for dismissal, seconded by Scott Carrara. Again, by voice vote, hopefully there's no doubt in the mind of the moderator, we're going to do this by voice vote, all those in favor of dismissing Article seven, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, Article seven is hereby dismissed. Declare that a vote. We're moving on to Article eight, which is-
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Jiro.
A point of personal privilege.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I hope I'm not being premature in this, but I think we're getting close to, uh, having a new town manager. And because you people are, in fact, the representatives of the town, you are the government in the town, I'd like to recognize Mark Tisdale for taking on the duties and responsibilities of interim town manager. He had a very significant personal sacrifice at a critical time to him and his wife and his young family over these past eight months. Uh, he's demonstrated once again, he's did this before, his leadership and the trust and respect his peers and others have in him. He did not do this alone. The department heads and staff pulled together to make this happen, and we want to thank them as well. In closing, I guess I don't want to take too much time, but I'd like to mention again the three words that I mentioned before: leadership, trust, and respect. Mark has all of those, and I think we all owe him a thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Lujio. Comments? All right. Now we move on to the last article of the evening. Article eight, page five, which is Walnut Street Traffic Safety Improvement. I'll ask Mr. Bonanocchi to read the proposed motion. Von?
That the town vote to appropriate the sum of $250,000 to pay for design and construction services associated with traffic improvements to Walnut Street, and that to meet this appropriation, $250,000 be transferred from free cash.
Is there a second? Seconded by, is it Elliott? I hear you, the second, I don't want to take Elliott Hanson as the second on. Thank you. I would ask, Finance Committee report, Bonanocchi.
Finance committee voted ten to three to recommend a town meeting as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Municipal Regulations, David Billow.
Municipal Regulations voted five to nothing in favor of recommending to town meeting as written in the warrant.
Thank you, sir. Municipal Operations Committee did not have a quorum, so no vote was taken on that matter. All right, at this point, I'll ask Mark Tisdale for the presentation.
Thank you. Mark Tisdale, interim town manager. Uh, this article is for the construction of improvements on Walnut Street, uh, from Prospect Street to Park Street. Essentially, there's a group of people that have lived in that area for many years now. Uh, they've seen increased, uh, you know, vehicles on that street. Uh, as you know, Park and Walnut Street is now signalized, it's easier to get through, it's safer, uh, it's, it's, uh, good for pedestrians. Obviously, it was a great improvement, but obviously vehicles know it's an easier area to go through now. So more vehicles are traveling down Walnut, therefore more vehicles are speeding down Walnut because of the geometry of Walnut. It's very, very wide, uh, road. Um, many residents came to the select board over the last, uh, year or so, uh, into the engineering department to come up with some sort of solution to this, this problem. And, uh, you know, the problem is speeding. Uh, there was also concerns about trucks, uh, and things of that nature, but the primary concern that came to the board was for speeding of vehicles on that, on that street. Uh, there was a presentation, we had a consultant get involved, a traffic consultant, uh, they went through, looked at the area, surveyed the area, uh, we walked the area with them, got them familiar with the, with the area. Uh, they, they had all the traffic counts, uh, the Old Colony Planning Council did all the traffic counts for us, so we had those numbers in place. Um, then they came up with alternatives. Obviously, there's some alternatives where you can, you know, spend over a million dollars to fix this road, um, but we believe that, that actually some of the cheaper alternatives will achieve the same effect. Uh, the Board of Selectment, uh, Select Board voted alternative two, I believe, as you can see in the back of your book. Um, essentially, this alternative, what it does, uh, it has a few, you know, few, um, aspects to it. Number one is, there's a lot of pavement marking from Prospect down to, to Park Street. What we're going to be doing is, right now, there's, the striping on that street's vague, we're going to be actually striping, restriping the road with narrower travel lanes. The, the extra area on the side will actually be bike lanes. We are a complete street policy town now. Uh, in 2016, we won the award to be a complete street town. So now, when we improve streets, we're required to look at all modes of transportation, not just vehicles and people walking, it's also people biking. Uh, so by narrowing the lanes down, it created an area for bike lanes. We did not create the bike lanes to slow traffic down. So we narrowed the lanes down, uh, to slow down traffic, and then we had extra area to add bike lanes. Um, so it's, I, I give you people an example, a lot of people question, well, you're striping the roads, how a car is going to slow down? Uh, people slow down. It's been proven, it's been studied by engineers, that by striping roads, narrow, people slow down. It's just like when you're driving down any road that has construction with Jersey barriers or something that narrows the road down, you will slow down. It's proven. Um, so there'll be pavement, pavement striping for that, there'll be pavement striping for the bike lanes. We'll also be designating this as a safety zone, twenty-five, a twenty mile per hour safety zone that's enforceable. Uh, it's a new standard that the MUTCD manual allows in the state. It's the design manual, uh, allows this, it's enforceable. It's actually on Island Street, too. We did that a few years ago. It's been pretty, um, effective. We also have dynamic speed feedback signs on Walnut Street in a couple of different spots. You know, the flashing signs that when you're, when you're speeding, you know, it tells you your speed, and if you're going too fast, it flashes, and there's all different styles with, you know, faces that frown and faces that are happy and all that kind of thing, but, well, the details of that will come later. Um, we'll also have a high visi, high visibility crosswalks at Pierce, at, at the Pierce Street Crossing, where there's one now. Uh, there'll be rapid rectangle flashing beacons proposed there, those beacons that you see in the square and down there, Sonic, those are pretty effective. Uh, they have voice ones, they have, you know, the lights flash when you push the button, so when cars are coming down, they'll see when pedestrians need to cross. Uh, there'll also be new crosswalks at Chestnut and Prospect Street, too, the Prospect Street intersection. Additionally, there'll be a curb bump out at the Pierce Street Crosswalk. That'll serve a couple purposes. First, the bump outs is, is just the redefinition of the road, that instead of a straight curb, you're bumping it out, and it actually physically narrows the road down, which also helps vehicles to slow down, as we all know. What that also, that bump out also does is actually creates a, a shorter distance for a pedestrian crossing the street, so you're getting probably another 10 feet less distance to cross, which makes it safer, uh, for, for pedestrians crossing that area, and there is a, obviously, a school across the street. Um, and, uh, that's all I got, so I thought I had more, more stuff, but essentially, that's the, um, the improvements for that area. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, this is the period of technical questions. Anybody have any questions? Peter Murphy, please rise, state your name and precinct number, followed by, sorry, Eric, your hands go up, too.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. Uh, a couple of questions I have is, uh, what was the cost of this design that you came up with, and where did the money for this design come from?
This came from the, the cost was, um, around $10,000, don't quote me on that, but-
What?
Around $10,000, and it came from the engineering department consultant line.
Okay. So then the, uh, the other question I have is, uh, can please enforce a, a speed limit if, if it's not posted with signs? Because Walnut Street is not posted with the speed limit.
The, these signs will be enforceable, yes.
Okay, so right, right now, you're talking about excessive speed, 37 miles an hour as opposed to 30 miles an hour, but if there's no posted signs, um, where did the money come from? Right now, you have a speed radar device that was just installed on that street.
I believe that came from DPW.
Okay.
Is Paul here? No, there you go.
And I want to have the DPW director come down, if he has a moment.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but apparently the speed radar sign's been there for a while, so it'd be before Paul took over as DPW director, is that correct? Diane, I know Diane.
It's only been there two weeks, three weeks, is why I went to town.
Is it the one with the wheels on it, the portable one?
No, this is the one that's-
Then on Walnut, let, let me just ask for clarification. I think what you're asking, asking for the speed sign on Walnut Street?
On Walnut, it flashes the speed.
Yeah, so the speed sign on Walnut Street that lights up if you, what your speed is, that's what the question is.
I think there's already, there's been one there for a while, right?
Three weeks.
Well, three weeks. I'm sorry, I don't know where that sign came from. I'm trying to figure that out right now.
This will cut-
All right. Stop for a second. Peter Murphy, what's your question?
So my, my question was, how many does, how many of those devices does the DPW have available?
And please introduce yourself to the town meeting representatives.
Sure, Paul Jafro in Public Works. Uh, we don't, we don't have any, really any of those in stock. We, those are ordered for special projects.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I have John Lenahan, please state your name and precinct number, followed by Eric Coleman, followed by Jim Curtin. Forget anybody.
John Lenahan, precinct one. I was just wondering, the design looks great in many ways. That bump out, is that going to force bikers out into the road?
It's a great question. Um, so that bump out is actually designed with bike ramps also, with signage that directs them up onto the bump out and then through the other side.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Eric Coleman, please state your name and precinct number, please. Eric Coleman, precinct five, that was my question. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next up is Jim Curtin, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Jim Curtin, precinct four. Are you sure your measurements of the, the width of Walnut Street? Because I know when you get down towards the end of Walnut and Park, it narrows down. My problem is, is trying to get public safety vehicles down there in emergencies if you have, if you wind up doing what they wind up doing over on Central Street. So we got to run into that problem again?
No, so the, so from curb to curb, it's staying the same dimension. The pavement width is the same, it's how we're striping the road that's changing. And if anything, uh, there's actually going to be the reduction of parking spaces on that lower end from Capen Street, so if there are cars parked there now, they won't be there after, that will, should improve your turning situations.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Sandra Souza, when you get to the microphone, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Sandra Souza, precinct one. So, the design looks, the design looks really nice. I guess my question is, more so on, um, the speeding. I travel that area a lot, um, and it looks like the average speeds are actually under the 30 mile per hour speed limit, and so if you're going to reduce it to 20, you know, most people would seem are already within the speed limit. So doesn't it make more sense to, I guess, enforce the speed limit for those that are, you know, breaking the law now? Doing more speed enforcement rather than change the speed limit?
Well, currently, I believe there's no speed signs, speed limit signs on that quarter. Um, and if you actually put a speed sign on that quarter right now, without the, the situation I explained to you with the safety zone-
Right.
-of making it 20, the eighty-fa, the 85th percentile's speed right now is around, it's in the high 30s roughly, and that actually helps determine what the speed limit sign would be. So most likely in this, in this situation, you have a, you'd have a speed limit sign of 40 to 45 if you've got that permitted through mass DOT.
But it's a high, that's, that's a thickly settled neighborhood, so that would never go for 40 miles an hour.
If you went in front of DOT, that's how they would permit it, but with this new safety zone requirement, it actually gets it down to an enforceable 20 mile per hour speed, speed limit, which is good.
I'm just thinking, if people don't follow a 30 mile an hour speed limit, they're not going to follow a 20 mile an hour speed limit, but that, that's fine.
You all set?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Peggy Sewick, please state your name and precinct number when you get to the microphone.
Peggy Sewick, precinct two. Will that help eliminate some of the trucks, the heavy trucks that go up and down that street, and some of them do speed? Don't forget, we have the preschool there, we have the library, there's a park, a lot of foot traffic in that area.
Yep. So I think trucks usually pick the path of least resistance to get from A to B. Um, so by going down this road and it being narrower, yeah, it could, could eliminate some trucks from taking it, um, but again, it's probably not going to solve that problem. That's a different problem, the truck situation. Uh, what, the only really real way to solve that problem is a truck exclusion on Walnut Street, and that's a much larger, um, situation to deal with. In order to go through a truck exclusion, you have to provide a, another route that vehicles can take to get to the same point afterwards. That's within a reasonable distance of that same area. So you have to get that permitted through mass DOT, and we actually are in discussions with DOT now, if they'd even entertain something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Technical question period? If not, we're going to move on to pro and con debate or comments. Comments? Mr. Ventresco, please come down to our microphone, state your name and precinct number, please.
Peter Ventresco, precinct eight. Uh, my comments are going to kind of fall on some of the questions they asked before, but as far as the truck situation on Walnut Street, uh, I think basically that's all because trucks can't go down Pleasant Street to the square, to take a left if they want to go one through the Park Street. So, uh, by making that Walnut Street narrower, I don't think it's going to solve the problem for the trucks, and I'm not ha, like, uh, I'm not happy with these roads getting narrower because what they're doing on Central Street, from where I live up to the, uh, Pearl Street, it's so narrow, you get two trailer trucks going in different directions, and you got a fire truck coming down the middle, it's, it's, it's almost impossible, it's too narrow. So there's a safety issue there. That road, we shouldn't be making them narrow, they should be, stay wide the way they were. And as far as slowing people down, uh, Canton Street, where I live on, is not that wide, but there's a lot of cars that speed up there. These, I don't know, kids in their twenties, they got these little hot rods- These, I don't know, kids in their 20s, they got these little hot rods and they zooming. So the only thing you're going to stop these speeders on a wide road or a narrow road, you got to get more police out there with speed traps. Otherwise, you're not going to solve anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ventresco. Anybody else? Pro and con debate? Mr. Murphy?
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2. Getting back to my original comments as far as, there's no speed limit signs posted on that street. So that makes it, with the discussion I had with the Stoughton Police, they can't enforce anything unless it's ridiculous speed, but they're not going to enforce a speed limit 37 miles an hour if the street's not posted. So those signs probably cost $40 apiece. You can buy a lot of $40 signs for a quarter of a million dollars. The line striping, there's no line striping on that street whatsoever. You could do just plain line striping. The, you're fortunate enough that on that street, you do have sidewalks on both sides. So if, if anything, the crosswalks could be freshened up. And the last thing I'm going to say to the Select, actually, no, going back to that flashing sign, I asked about the availability. That went up there about three weeks ago and we can debate back and forth, but it went up about three weeks ago, I'll give you four weeks. It went up there real quick. Turnpike Street is a chronic problem with trucks traffic there, more so than Walnut Street. For the Select Board, all right, we've been pushing for additional development down Campanelli Park. You have to do something that, no, I realize that.
You're out of order if you go into Campanelli Park. You have to stay on this.
No, but when I'm comparing one street to another, I'm doing comp here.
We don't do compares right now, okay?
Well, this is comment.
Okay, but stay on question eight.
Again, if the DPW has any more of those flashing signs, I'd like to see a couple on Turnpike Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cynthia Walsh, did you want? Elizabeth Giordano, go ahead, please state your name and precinct.
Liz Giordano, Precinct 2. I'm also a resident of Walnut Street. In true transparency, my house is in these schematics. I'm on several of the pages. Just to, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker, I just want to be clear that the road is not being narrowed, correct? It's just paint, the road is not being changed?
Correct.
Okay. Second of all, my house is right in the corner of Walnut and Pierce and the amount of traffic and the speed going right past our house to the preschool, to the center, to the park is scary, to the point where I've actually had to change my elementary school child's bus stop because cars go so fast. So, you know, as a member of this meeting and as a resident, I urge you to vote yes on this, if for nothing else, the safety of the residents and the children in town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Cynthia Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 3. Move the question.
All right. Who's got the second on that? All right, Bob Cohen, second on that for the record. Again, this cuts off debate. If there's any doubt, I'll, I'll ask for a voice vote. Is there any doubt in the moderator's opinion of the vote? We'll have to use the clickers. I'll ask for a voice vote to cut off debate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. Motion to cut off debate passes. Now we're going back to question eight, we're going to vote on this. Ready to vote on? How about point of information? Go ahead. Rise to the microphone, please, state your name and point of information before we proceed to the vote.
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2. Point of information on the vote here. Does this have to be a simple minority or does it have to be a two-thirds?
Simple majority?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I understand what you meant, unfortunately. All right, I'm going to refer to Town Council. Okay, he tells me it's a simple majority vote.
Thank you.
Nope, there's no borrowing.
Right.
It's coming from, the appropriation, he tells me, is coming from free cash. No borrowing, so no two-thirds needed. Simple majority. Okay, again, on question eight, we're going to proceed to the vote. Are you ready? Let's proceed. Okay. Question, excuse me, Article 8 passes. 91 yes, 15 no, 0 abstentions.
Mr. Moderator.
That's Cynthia Walsh. I recognize you, Cynthia. We're going to have to vote on this.
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 3. Hot Time Deputy Moderator. I move to dissolve this special town meeting.
Okay, by voice vote, hopefully there's no doubt in the mind of the moderator. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Precinct cheers. Please turn in your clickers to the precinct cheers. And as we close out this evening, I'd like to thank everybody, all our invited guests, all the town employees, town meeting reps, and to you, the townspeople, watching this at home. Thank you and have a good evening.